Hey, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I want to say welcome. So glad to see our colleagues from CMS here and look forward to some good information in the presentation of this budget. Let's start with introductions. We'll go with our clerks and then we'll have the executive team introduce themselves as well from both sides.
Good afternoon, I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, Commissioner for District Six.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Meyer and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon, my name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large, and I also have the privilege of serving as Vice Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four. I also have the honor of serving as Chair.
My name is Bill Madilek and I represent the most powerful people in this district, and that's District Two. You're sitting in District Two. Be careful how you act today.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Arthur Griffin and I serve County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram and I serve you on the Board of County Commissioners at Large.
Good afternoon to our own Wade County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Dina Diorio, County Manager.
Good afternoon, Adrian Cox, County Budget Director.
Good afternoon, Anthony Traubman, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon, Mike Bryant, Income County Manager.
Good afternoon, Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager.
Hello, I'm David Boyd, CFO for the county.
Hello, Michael Griswold, Deputy Director of Strategy and Innovation.
Ryan Williams, Deputy Budget Director.
Our CMS colleagues.
Crystal Hill Superintendent.
Beth Thompson, Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer.
Kelly Klutz, Chief Financial Officer.
Kay Hee, what did you say?
Kelly Klutz, Chief Financial Officer.
Tim Ivey, Chief Operations Officer.
Nancy Brightwell, Chief of Recruitment, Retention, Talent Development.
Good afternoon, Melissa Bautnike, Deputy Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Thelma Byers Bailey, representing Charlotte Mecklenburg on District Two.
Good afternoon, Candace Salmon-Hosey, Chief Technology Officer.
Good afternoon, Shauna Spicker, Chief Communications Officer.
Good afternoon, Keisha Khan, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Good afternoon, Scott McCollough, Chief Compliance Officer.
Good afternoon, Caitlin Honeycutt, Executive Director of Budget.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. If you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. I think everyone should understand why we are here. We are going to hear from our CMS colleagues with respect to their budget requests. We are happy to have them here. I think we've all been through this before, and so we are going to use the same ground rules that we always use. Please allow them to go through their complete presentation. We will open it up for questions and feedback that will be related specifically to the budget requests. Any other requests or items, we can certainly take off. I think the Superintendent would be fine with parking lot, parking lot, lotting those ideas and following back up with our Board through the Manager's Office. Is that fair, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
All right, fantastic. Well, we are going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much and good afternoon, Chair Jarrell, Vice Chair Altman, and members of the Board. I bring you greetings on behalf of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools Board of Education. We are extremely grateful for the collaborative partnership with your body, the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to take this point of privilege to thank Dina. It's been a pleasure actually absolutely work with you over the last three years or so. I appreciate your partnership. I appreciate the opportunities that we've had to respectfully disagree with each other and I appreciate just the great foundation that you have built here in Mecklenburg County. So, thank you so much. To Michael Bryant, look forward to working with you closely as you move forward in your new role. Today, during our time together, Beth Thompson, who is our Chief Strategy of Innovation, will begin with just a few of our many accomplishments thus far this school year. She will then talk through the process for forecasting, aligning, and resourcing what is needed for Year Two of our strategic plan during the 2025-26 school year. We will also talk about our annual targets for our four goals and ensuring that we are resourcing our organization to operate efficiently and effectively with excellence. Chief Financial Officer Kelly Klutz will walk through the recommended 25-26 Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools budget, including the request for local expansion. We will respond to questions about the budget as well. At this time, I will turn it over to Chief Thompson.
Our district, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, is the second-largest district in North Carolina and the sixteenth-largest in the United States. One hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred students, representing one hundred seventy-five countries and one hundred and forty-six native languages, attend school in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. There are one hundred and eighty-six schools that are organized into eleven learning, uh, school performance areas, five elementary, two middle, one K-8, and three high school. Over a hundred thousand students are transported on eight hundred and thirty-nine buses to and from twenty-six thousand five hundred bus stops daily, covering a hundred and nine thousand miles per day and seventeen million three hundred and forty-six thousand miles per year. Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools runs the largest transportation system in the state of North Carolina and a hundred and fifteen thousand student meals are served daily. We have four goals that focus our work on student outcomes. They are a reflection of our community's vision and propel student achievement in early literacy, literacy in grades three through eight, Math I, and post-secondary readiness. Those goals, including their baselines and five-year targets, are shown here. We also have four guardrails that ensure we honor our community's values as we pursue our goals. Our district placemat highlights our mission, vision, core beliefs, goals, and guardrails. The foundation for these are our four pillars of excellence: academic, people, operational, and engagement. The 25-29 strategic plan outlines how we will meet or even exceed the ambitious goals that lie before us. The 24-25 annual plan has outlined which components of that five-year strategic plan we've undertaken this school year, the first year of the five-year strategic plan. Twenty-four-twenty-five department plans are organized to show how there is an intentional department and leader accountable and responsible for each priority and strategy in the strategic plan. Each department has listed its goals, key levers, performance measures, and collaborating departments. And each school, all one hundred and eighty-six, have a school improvement plan that is aligned to the strategic and annual plans as well. All of these are located on the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools website. So, in advance of the official release of our 24-25 annual plan report at our June twentieth Summer Leadership Conference, I want to give you a glimpse into what's been accomplished thus far this year, acknowledging that this year is not over yet. The Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools Board of Education monitors our progress on our four goals and guardrails at every single Board of Education meeting. Much progress has been made already this school year. Both the videos and the discussion from these reports, as well as the reports and appendices themselves, are located on the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools website for each and every goal and guardrail. So, let's look at academic excellence. The ultimate impact measure of a pre-K-12 education is that students graduate enrolled, enlisted, or end or employed. That requires that students, in addition to demonstrating college and career readiness in their core subjects like reading, math, and science, also demonstrate post-secondary readiness. And this year, thus far, CMS students have received forty-six point two million dollars in scholarships as of April 2025. Eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-one high school students are enrolled in college-level advanced placement courses. Thirty-nine mid-year graduates completed their associate's degree and two hundred and fifty are on track to earn an associate's degree on top of their diploma in May. Charlotte Mecklenburg School students have the ability to earn credentials. Earning a credential provides documentation to an employer that a student has mastered the skills required for employment and advancement in a career. It's a fantastic opportunity for our students, an opportunity that, quite frankly, would cost them a lot of money outside of the school system. While we have many students still finalizing their credential completion, over one thousand six hundred students enrolled in career and technical education courses have already earned a Tier Two or Three credentials thus far this year, and over six thousand nine hundred have earned a Tier One, Two, and Three, and/or Three credential. We've held three large school career awareness events that include twelve thousand middle and high school students, including the new Endless Possibilities event, which brought our district's ten thousand eighth-grade middle school students to the Park Expo to explore high school choice programs, post-secondary education opportunities, and various career paths prior to enrolling in high school courses this school year; the Futures Fair, during which three hundred students traveled to Avid Exchange to interact, interview, and network with forty-three business, active business partners in Charlotte Mecklenburg region; and the What's Your E! event, during which we celebrated over one thousand five hundred seniors in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools showcasing their post-secondary choices following graduation. We also took over seventy-five students to the Job Fair of the Carolinas recently. This was the first time this event has invited Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools to attend. We know that people are at the heart of achieving excellence across academics, operations, and engagement pillars. That's why we've taken a strategic approach to teacher recruitment and retention, targeting high-need vacancies, and strengthening support for our high, for our priority staffing schools. This has resulted in great improvements in both our teacher vacancy rates and retention rates. Ninety-nine percent of teaching positions are filled for the 24-25 school year. Attrition rates are improving from eighteen point two percent in 22-23 to fourteen point one percent in 23-24. One hundred percent of teachers new to CMS for the 24-25 school year have had an onboarding experience. And eighty-two percent of staff completing their onboarding post-surveys indicate they felt prepared for the classroom and felt a sense of belonging in their schools. Additionally, we've continued to expand two key programs that allow our most effective teachers to grow in place, staying close to students but also providing them with a career path that allows them to have a larger teacher and student impact, also making additional money. Eight hundred and twenty-seven teachers are in teacher-leader pathway positions through our Teacher Leader Pathway Program. Ninety-two percent of our schools have at least one nationally board-certified teacher, with one thousand four hundred and fifty active nationally board-certified teachers in the district ranking third in the entire nation. Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools has expanded our teacher residency program, recognized at the state level as being one of the largest and most effective educator preparation programs in the state of North Carolina. This program has allowed us to take current employees and external candidates and help them become fully certified teachers. A hundred and eighty teachers are being recognized tomorrow night for completing the teacher residency program, and approximately three hundred more teachers are enrolled in the teacher residency program for the upcoming school year. At our Career Fair, we had more candidates, over one thousand three hundred attendees attend our most recent Career Fair, and that's more than we've had attend in the past five years. While we continue to advocate for state salary increases, our district has responded to other urgent needs our teachers and staff have expressed, such as support for housing stability. We've launched the CMS Host Initiative in all our priority staffing schools, offering personalized support to help teachers find housing options that best meet their needs. And At Home in CMS has served over two thousand employees already in its first year, offering knowledge-building sessions and support with renting or owning in Charlotte. We want our educators to be able to live in the community where they serve our children. That's people excellence. In the area of operational excellence, we've increased data security and AI efforts. We've increased overall, our overall cybersecurity posture and improved ability to prevent, detect, and respond to cyber threats, including conducting internal and external testing to enhance security defenses and expose any vulnerabilities that would allow access to sensitive data. We've established a comprehensive device lifecycle refresh system, migrated outdated OS platforms to the latest Microsoft platforms resulting in improved security, received over ten thousand survey responses, and facilitated thirteen engagement sessions, visioning workshops, and focus groups to inform the draft of the CMS AI Vision Statement and Core Beliefs. And just this morning, conducted our AI Data Privacy Summit to support the development of policy and guidelines for AI use within our organization. It should be noted that items with an asterisk are also actions that we've taken to mitigate organizational risk, a part of our risk management work as a district. We've also engaged in modernization efforts. These include implementation of Phase One of Oracle, ServiceNow, FMX, and Red Rover, successful transition of school funds online to the cloud in February of 2025, preparation for the new statewide student information system called Infinite Campus, including online registration and digital document delivery for parents and caregivers. Again, items with an asterisk are also actions we've taken to mitigate organizational risk. And in the area of engagement excellence, we've launched five Superintendent Advisory Councils and three connections with Crystal to engage stakeholders. Community partners have provided almost one point one million dollars in the form of in-kind donations and almost eighteen million dollars in resources and programs. Over forty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-eight volunteers are registered to support schools, and eight thousand volunteers supported a CMS school thus far this year. Note, end-of-year testing is coming up, so all proctors welcome. Over a hundred and forty-six thousand volunteer hours were logged, and the community has donated almost five million dollars' worth of volunteer hours. Specific to family engagement, in addition to the daily engagement with families at the school level, there were sixteen thousand twenty-two additional engagement connections with families at district-sponsored events. Five thousand one hundred eighty-three parents or caretakers participated in at least one Family Academy session. Twenty-two virtual Lunch and Learn sessions were held. Twenty-three in-person family engagement sessions took place. New on-demand family engagement sessions were added. Twenty-nine available sessions with a total of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine video reviews to date. Collaboration has taken place with sixteen community organizations to host these sessions, and there have been thirteen Family Academies sessions that specifically supported families' understanding of their current student performance on assessments and how they can help their child with content not yet mastered. That's just the tip of the iceberg. And a full report, again, on our progress thus far this year, our 24-25 annual plan report will be available on our website on Friday, June twentieth. Turning to 25-26, I want to share with you information about our planning for the 25-26 school year. The information I'm sharing reflects work done and continuing to be done by divisional chiefs, department leaders, and support staff. This planning work, our 25-26 annual plan, will officially launch on June twentieth at our Summer Leadership Conference. You will see continuity between what has been accomplished in 24-25 and our next step work and improvement in 25-26. Our leader training and development will expand from a focus on project management to process improvement. Our monitoring and reporting routines will focus on tracking not just measures of implementation, are we doing the work, but measures of effectiveness and impact, augmenting our ability to make intentional, real-time adjustments for rapid improvement and longer-term analysis and evaluation that'll be required to achieve the goals that lie before us. At our Board of Education's February Budget Work Session, we looked at then-current data trends related to our goals, and we noted the following. Current 24-25 performance in Goals One and Four indicates that we're progressing and will need to make continued forecasted gains, four percent and two percent respectively, in the upcoming 25-26 school year to achieve next year's targets. Current performance in Goals Two and Three indicating that, again, we are progressing, but we have larger gains to make in the areas of grades three, eight literacy, and Math I in the 25-26 school year. So, in response, we're using our theory of change to prepare the 25-26 annual plan specific to those Goals One, Two, and Three. We know it's critical that we resource, resource each of the inputs on this theory of change next year relative to the needed rates of improvement for goal attainment. And it goes without saying that teachers are critical. We must pay our teachers better in a way that allows us to recruit the quality teachers we need, train and develop those teachers faster and better, getting the best teachers in front of our students for the most days possible, and retain those teachers, reducing our need to recruit and train so much in future years. Our teachers are the key levers and that all other elements of this theory of change support to achieving our goals. And now, having reviewed our work in 24-25 and upcoming work for 25-26, Chief Financial Officer Kelly Klutz will share information, information regarding the budget.
Thank you, Chief Thompson. So, let's talk a little bit more about the 25-26 school year and how we've approached budget and planning. So, we prioritized our people and stability. This includes continued investment in student devices and ensuring equitable access to This budget is designed to align with the Board's student outcomes focus goals, and it's our first budget since fiscal year nineteen twenty without federal ESR funds. Despite the transition, we've maintained a minimal increase in the total operating budget of growth with less than one percent year over year. Additionally, the budget continues our commitment to student access to technology by funding a year-two of a four-year, two-million-dollar sustainability plan for student devices, ensuring equitable access and academic success. Continuing on with our 25-26 budget highlights, this area focuses on two areas: retention and recruitment, and capital outlay. For retention and recruitment, the budget includes an assumed three percent state-driven pay increase for all staff, an average of five percent certified supplement increase, and the implementation of Phase Two of the market-aligned salary schedules for our classified staff. These efforts reflect our ongoing commitment to investing in our employees and ensuring competitive compensation to attract top talent. On the capital outlay side, the budget prioritizes the investments in safety, security, roofing, HVAC, and upgrades to mitigate operational risk and maintain safe learning environments. Our proposed operating budget for 25-26 is one point nine five billion, serving over a hundred and forty-one thousand students. Six percent of those funds come from federal resources. This makes up a small share, but they are critical, is a critical share. They are designed to supplement, not replace, state and local funding. They support targeted needs like literacy, multilingual learners, and teacher development, areas where we often do not have enough state dollars. That's why we want to highlight the current risk associated with federal funding, especially in light of recent developments in the proposed federal budget. Recent updates indicate that Title I and IDEA funding are proposed to be maintained at the current level in the, in President Trump's budget for fiscal year twenty-six. However, these programs are slated for consolidation into broader funding streams, potentially altering how the funds are allocated and used by states. Conversely, Title II and Title III programs face significant threats. The budget proposes the complete elimination of the Title II, which supports teacher professional development, and Title III, which report, which aids in English learner acquisition. One of CMS's highest populations in the state is our, our multilingual learners, and we exceed the amount of multilingual learners than even Wake does in this state. Additionally, our TLP program, sometimes referred to as TSL, which was frozen several months ago amid a broader federal funding pause, remains in a state of uncertainty. Despite court orders to resume disbursements, the administration has continued to withhold the funds. While the proposed budget is subject to congressional approval and may undergo changes, the potential elimination of Title II and Title III, along with the ongoing freeze of the TLP program or grant, pose significant risk to our district's ability to support educators and multilingual Let's take a step back and look at the full picture of our recommended 25-26 budget. This includes all funding sources, state, federal, and local. While the total budget is significant, much of it is restricted with limited flexibility for both the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners. That's why after we, after this overview, we'll focus more closely on the local portion, because that's where your decisions have the greatest ability to shape our outcomes of our students and our staff. Now, we'll discuss our operating budget, which outlines the resources needed to support day-to-day operations of the school district. The proposed operating budget for fiscal year twenty-five-26 is one point nine five billion, designed to support the needs of a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six students. The largest portion of the funding comes from state at fifty-five point four percent. Local funding is at thirty-four point two percent, reflecting vital support that we receive from you, Mecklenburg County. Federal funds make up six percent, while other and special revenue accounts for four point three percent. The majority of our budget is allocated to salaries and benefits, representing seventy-seven point eight percent of our total spend, and it underscores our investment in people, from teachers to support staff. Purchasing services account for eleven point five percent, covering essential contracted services that support school operations, like transportation and building services. Supplies and materials make up five point four percent, ensuring that classrooms, offices, and facilities have necessary resources. And lastly, our school, charter school payment accounts for four point eight percent, reflecting funds that follow students with, who attend public school, public charter schools. Our total recommended budget for the upcoming year is two point oh nine billion, which includes funding from multiple funding sources. The total operating budget is one point nine five billion, with contributions from North Carolina State, Mecklenburg County, federal, other, and special revenues. For capital funding, we've reflected the thirty-two point nine million dollars, which includes our standard twenty-two point nine million capital appropriation, along with a ten million dollar one-time ask for funding to address key priorities such as safety, security, roofing, and HVAC upgrades. Our enterprise funds are a hundred and six point seven million, including ninety-five point four seven million of school nutrition services and eleven point three million of our after-school program. Now, let's take a closer look at the county portion of our operating budget. Local funding is essential, not just to fill the gaps left by the state and federal services, but also to ensure that we can attract and retain educators and support staff so that our students, that our students depend on. Charlotte's cost of living continues to rise, with the median home income of, over four hundred and twenty thousand, and average rent exceeding sixteen hundred per month. Transportation, healthcare, and child, childcare expenses also add to the financial burden. To remember competitive and provide, to remain competitive and provide a stable learning environment, we rely on county support to offer competitive compensation and maintain essential programs. This slide reflects a set of investments we are choosing to make, not through a new funding request, but through redirecting existing dollars from central office. Included here are efforts to strengthen our leadership stability, address longstanding compensation gaps, and invest in teacher development, critical for retention and instructional quality. Those adjustments help move us closer to market, but we're still not there. This is meaningful progress, but we are not at the finish line. The areas have not been addressed in prior phase- The areas have not been addressed in prior phases of the compensation improvements. So to be clear, we are not going, we are not going, we are going to stop spending money on select central office expenses and start spending money here in these areas on people that are doing the work in our schools. Our budget includes four line items that we'll walk through today, the first one being the Certified Teacher Supplement. Teachers are the most important factor in student learning. Our district's work is designed to empower and support educators, ensuring that we have the resources, training, and compensation needed to excel. So we want to make sure we have a good understanding of how teacher salaries are determined, in North Carolina specifically. So all teachers in North Carolina earn a state-determined and funded base salary that is established by the North Carolina Teacher Salary Schedule. The schedule sets the foundation for teacher pay across the state. In addition to their base pay, most teachers in North Carolina receive a state-determined and funded supplement. However, it's important to note that teachers in Charlotte Mecklenburg, Wake County, Guilford County, and Durham County are excluded from this state supplement in this fiscal year. An updated proposal is that only CMS and Wake will be excluded in '25-26. The overwhelming majority of teachers in North Carolina, including those in CMS, receive a locally determined supplement funded by a local Board of County Commissioners. This supplement is designed to help remain competitive and attract qualified educators. In some districts, with taxing authority or additional supplement, support from their local government, teachers may receive an additional local supplement beyond what is funded by their normal county commission. So when looking at average certified supplement across the state, CMS currently offers the second-highest teacher supplement in North Carolina. It is our goal to be the top spot. But being near the top does not necessarily give our teachers an advantage. It simply helps or it attempts to level the playing field. Mecklenburg County has one of the highest cost of living in our state. So unlike other areas of the budget, the local teacher supplement is funded entirely by the county. It is the only mechanism that we have to offset the cost pressures and make compensation more competitive here in Charlotte. Your investment directly impacts our ability to retain educators we have, that we have and attract the talent that we need. This data reflects a point in time. Other districts are also presenting their budgets and may propose increases to supplements. So continued progress is key for us to remain competitive. The local portion of the budget is where you have the opportunity to help make the most direct impact by addressing the specific needs in Mecklenburg County. During the Board's budget work session, our Board emphasized three key priorities when establishing the supplement schedule: ensuring that all certified employees receive an increase, providing an additional increase for certified employees with 15-plus years of service, and leveling out some dips in our pay structure. The model before you aligns with these priorities and directly supports recruitment and retention efforts. The previous slide looks at the supplement in isolation. This chart shows you a teacher-based pay plus supplement for a total salary view. A teacher with a bachelor's degree and 30 years of experience tops out at $70,199 in CMS. It's important to note that the state salary schedule levels out at year 15, remains flat for, and has a modest increase at year 25, and then continues to be flat after year 25. Now we'll review state-driven salary and benefit adjustments, the second line item that we're requesting. We have built this budget on an assumption as we wait for a final decision on the 25-26 state budget. Currently, there is no confirmed information regarding salary increases that may be included. To ensure responsible financial planning, CMS is budgeting with an assumed 3% salary increase based on the average salary increases over the last five years. This is strictly a placeholder assumption, and the actual increase will depend on the finalized state budget. Using the same logic, we build the budget on an assumed 4.24% increase in benefits. Our third funding request is a continued support for implementing the recommendation from the Classified Employee Compensation Study. To clarify, classified employees are the backbone of our daily operations. While they're not certified to teach, they play essential roles in keeping our schools running smoothly. With more than 390 unique job titles, this group includes bus drivers, custodians, teacher assistants, clerical staff, maintenance workers, and many others who support schools every day. After ensuring our lowest-paid employees now earn a minimum of $20, thank you for your support. We are moving toward implementing Phase Two of our Classified Employee Compensation Study. The next phase focuses on aligning additional positions more closely with market rates, reinforcing our commitment to fair and competitive pay across the district. Phase One prioritized pay grades six, seven, and eight, as well as bus drivers closer to the market. Although market rates are fluid and can shift over time, this phase, Phase One, impacted a large number of employees despite being, having a limited number of job titles. Phase Two will be just the opposite. Phase Two will target pay grades nine and above. While the goal was to continue closing the gap toward the market alignment, we recognize that not all salary schedules will reach full market parity during this phase. This work will need to continue into Phase Three, ensuring that we maintain a thoughtful and financially responsible approach. Unlike Phase One and Phase Two, unlike Phase One, Phase Two includes a broader set of job titles with an impact on a smaller number of employees, primarily those positions that could not be addressed due to financial constraints in Phase One. Our fourth and final request this evening is continued support for student devices. This investment represents Year Two of a four-year plan to ensure that every student has access to a reliable, updated device for student learning, both in and out of the classroom. During the pandemic, nearly all districts, including CMS, used ESER funding to purchase student devices. Those devices are now, have now reached their end of their lifecycle, making continued local investment critical. Access to updated technology is no longer optional, it's essential. Equitable access to digital tools directly supports academic success and ensuring all students can fully participate in modern learning environments. A four-year plan, this four-year plan is specific to Grades Four through 12. With a $16 million recurring investment, CMS can ensure that every student, Grades Four through 12, have a reliable working device on a four-year cycle. The gold bars indicate the investment that you made last year. $4 million of reoccurring for four years. We were able to purchase approximately 34,000 devices. To responsibly manage our commitment, we are pursuing a phased-in approach with the funding strategy paired with a four-year lease model, which allows us to provide more devices upfront while spreading the cost over time. So last year, your support of the $4 million allowed us to provide over 34,000 devices. This year, we are requesting $2 million indicated in the green, which we project to provide approximately $11,000 worth of devices. Tariffs and other things can impact that number that's represented in the green. In the following two years, we anticipate requesting $5 million each year to complete the plan as expected. This approach is not only financially manageable, but also designed to ensure sustainability so that students will always have access to a device that has, that is currently supported and functional. This slide pulls everything together, the key priorities we covered today. Each item reflects our commitment to people excellence, paying, developing, retaining the staff who make our schools work. 93% of this year's increased county request goes directly to that commitment, people excellence. These investments are not just about compensation, they're about improving stability in our schools, strengthening leadership, and ensuring every student has access to tools that they need to succeed. Our starting point for the county budget is $639.3 million, with a proposed increase of $28.2 million to address key priorities and needs. This brings the proposed county budget to $667.5 million. This increase reflects our ongoing commitment to supporting staff and enhancing student outcomes. Now we'll review capital outlay portion of the budget, which focuses on the critical facility needs. Our normal capital outlay appropriation is $22.9 million, and this year, we are requesting an additional $10 million to address pressing facility needs. This brings our total request to 32.9. These additional funds are intended to address key priorities we heard during our engagement sessions, including improvements to safety, security, roofing, and HVAC systems. This request reflects our commitment to maintain safe, secure, well-maintained learning environments for students and staff. CMS knows it's important to plan for more than just one year to keep our finances stable. Without looking ahead, we are constantly reacting to unexpected costs. The slide reflects our long-range planning efforts, giving you a clear view of what's ahead, not just this year, but for the next several years. Teacher supplements, the need to increase certified teacher supplement isn't a one-time request. You can expect to see that again in future years as we work toward becoming the top-paying district in the state and staying competitive in our high-cost region. For devices, as mentioned earlier, we're in Year Two of a four-year student device replacement plan. The investment will appear in the next two budget cycles to ensure that every student has reliable technology. It's also important to note that charter school enrollment grows, funding must be passed through CMS. Even though those students do not attend our schools, it's required by law, and it's our, and as the pressure mounts, we'll continue to monitor that. Utilities and operating costs, while utilities are expected to remain flat this year, that's not always the case. With rising energy costs and inflation, we anticipate an increase in the next year's utility budget. Thank you again for your support of the $2.5 billion bond. As those new schools come online, we'll need to add staff and operational costs associated with those. You can see those reflected in the five-year plan as well. Overall, this plan helps us prepare thoughtfully, avoid surprises, and ensure continued alignment between investment and the needs of a growing district. The Digital Budget Book is available electronically and provides comprehensive details about our financial plan, priorities, and funding allocations. This resource is designed to offer transparency and help stakeholders better understand how resources are being utilized. For easy access, a link and a QR code are provided. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Heel.
Thank you so much. In closing, I'd just like to thank you for your time and attention for today. We've made significant strides in delivering on our commitments, and the results speak for themselves. Our strategies are working. The resourcing decisions made this year have made a positive impact, and this proposed budget ensures that that momentum continues. Even in the face of challenges, we've been able to develop a budget that is fiscally sound. This is a testament to our ability to maximize resources and make responsible financial decisions. It also reflects our awareness of the anticipated revenue shortfalls and our commitment to manage them effectively. Today, we shared our celebrations, walked through the process we've used to identify and mitigate risk, make tough cuts to meet the goals of our Board, and determined the best way to maximize our primary funding sources. And that brings us to the summary of our request for local funding. We figured out a way how to recruit and retain the very best teachers, and we know that they have the greatest impact on student success and the whole child. But we can't make that happen without your help. 93% of our local funding request is about people excellence, investing in the staff who show up every single day for our students. We don't have the ability to do this on our own, and your support is what makes it possible. I'd like to thank you so much for fully funding our budget request for the past two years, and we're hopeful that you will continue with that support for the students of Mecklenburg County. Thank you so much, and Chair Darrell will turn it back over to you for questions.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Before we get to questions, I do want to take a moment to recognize Chair Sneed and Vice Chair Rankin, who have joined us, so thank you. Appreciate that, it was a lot that was covered, and I know there's going to be a lot of reaction from the Board. Madam Clerk, what we're going to do is, we're going to go beyond our standard three minutes because it was a lengthy presentation, so we're going to move that to four minutes. Colleagues, I'm going to ask you to focus comments and questions related to the presentation. If there are other areas that you'd like covered, those will be parked in, we'll put those in the parking lot and take away, like I said earlier. So starting, what we'll do, the lineup will be Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Townsend Ingram, and then Commissioner Leake. Commissioner Meyer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, that is a lot. First of all, biggest support of education, and I support this. I just wish we could pay the teachers more. I wish that was part of it. I am glad to see there is a little more for the teachers, so I support that. I do have just a couple of questions, and they're not numbered on the slides, but it's number 12. I don't know if that helps. I'm curious about the CMS HOST initiative, helping teachers find housing. Can you elaborate on that? I think that's incredible.
Sure, that's an initiative that is a part of my work with recruitment and retention. And the HOST program allows a teacher to fill out a very simple form with basic information, and from that, we have an external partner who has particular expertise around housing here in Charlotte, and they basically will help someone increase their housing stability or help ensure that they can take advantage of any opportunities that we have here in Charlotte to get from where they are currently to perhaps more stable housing. So what we're trying to do is demystify it, understand and hear our educators who are very tired, and oftentimes, the finding suitable housing is a daunting task, and so we're really trying to provide just white-glove service and support around a major stressor for them.
Are teachers taking advantage of the?
Very much so.
And how long has it been? How long have you had it?
We launched about four months ago.
Oh, okay. That's incredible, thank you. That's a great initiative, so thank you for that. Let's see, I made so many notes. You spoke in acronyms, what, TSL and TLP?
TLP is Teacher Leader Pathway, and TSL is the acronym that the state uses. Charlotte started, Charlotte Mecklenburg started the TLP program prior to the start of a state program, and so they just use a different acronym. Teacher Support is Principals, Teacher and Principal Support. I can look that acronym up for you, but it's the same thing. It's a Teacher Leader Program.
Okay. And that's all federal funds?
That particular one is. However, we do have some supplemental state funds that we use, and we have some local funds that we are also using for our TLP program.
And you said there are significant threats to these programs, which are so important to our children. And I must, I might have missed it, and I apologize. If we don't get those funds, what will happen? Those programs will completely end?
Not necessarily. So we'll need to, once we get the formal notification of a final decision, because that is currently an appeal, and we're waiting for that final decision. We have seven individuals that are paid with that grant. Our program- Our program would not go away, it's a, it's a very good program, it's effective, so we would find a way to keep it. We would need to determine how we could pay those six or seven people that are in that grant, but we would look at that broadly, look across our district at all of our expenses, measure those, and then go through a selection process to ensure that we are keeping the things that are effective.
That's a concern of mine, always. And you said ninety-three percent of this request is investment in human capital. I cannot agree more. I think the people that are working with their kids are the most important part of the budget. You said, I can't remember where it is, but you said you're taking funds that were...
That is your question.
You were taking funds that were basically the downtown office or whatever, your central office, and putting them where?
Into those commitments that were on the slide. Let me move to the slide.
It's number thirty-four.
Yes. So, the items on thirty-four, we're going to fund an increased compensation for our assistant principals, because they're below market.
Okay.
So, we're going to fund that. We're also going to fund an increased compensation for our specialists, they're undermarket as well, not competitive. And we're also going to fund directors. These three position types have not been included in any of our other compensation models, so these are the final ones that we need work on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And one, just one suggestion, if any staff responds, please state your name for the record so the clerk can make sure that that's captured. We'll move to Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Dr. Hill, thank you and your staff for your presentation. The forty-six million dollars in scholarships is impressive, we look for more of those. I have two questions, maybe three, let me go into parking lot, Mr. Chairman. On your goals, goal four, students will graduate, enroll, enlisted, and employed, how are you going to capture that? Is that somewhere in the budget a cost for capturing that information? And the question would be, how many of your students graduated in 2024 with less than a two-point-oh unweighted GPA? I asked that question last year, and you presented me with the number of students that graduated with a two-point-oh or less. So, if you, if you could present that, that would be great as a follow-up or parking lot question. The second question deals with pre-K. I could be wrong, and maybe you guys can correct me on this one. The last time we had that conversation, I wanted to know about MECC pre-K in terms of kindergarten readiness, and you presented DIBELS, and I looked, and it appeared that the State Board of Education has a policy that requires an assessment within thirty days or sixty days. I could be wrong, but you're the, you're the experts. Can you provide the county with feedback on MECC pre-K students that are kindergarten-ready in the five domains? I think the presentation you presented and the email that the county manager presented said that you present, you had a beginning, middle, and end for DIBELS, but there's more to the pre-K assessment than just DIBELS, is my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong today. And then the final observation deals with the population and enrollment, and this is just a general observation, and I've said before to you to let us know how we can help you with this. Prior to COVID in 2019, you had one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand students, you got one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand today. You lost about five percent of your market share, and the community has grown by a hundred-thousand residents, and so your admin cost in terms of your budget, your admin cost was four-point-three percent, four-point-four-three percent. In 2025, it was six-point-eight-one percent. That's a fifty-three percent increase. How are you addressing the cost of administrating the school district as opposed to dollars going into the, to the classroom? And last, but not least, your goal of reading at grades three through eight is fifty percent in 2029, in 2019, it was forty-four percent. So, if you look over the decade from 2019 to 2029, we would increase six points. Is there any way that you can reflect in the budget how to accelerate your goals, or maybe you can do more than fifty percent, grades three through eight, being college and career-ready? I had to give you all those questions because my time goes away.
You're all good, we got, I think I have them all.
Got them?
Yes, I think, but you, I know you'll help me if I don't.
You had extra time today.
I got extra time?
You had extra time, you had four minutes.
I'm going to start with goal four, if that's okay. So, goal four, the way we're currently measuring that is the percent of high school graduating seniors who've met at least one of seven indicators that would deem them on track to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. So, the current metric is not measuring what's happened after graduation, but it's measuring whether they're on track upon graduation, given those seven indicators, which I think we shared earlier back in January and are also on our website. The grade point average, I do not have available, but I have it noted, and so we can get back with you on that. Related to pre-K, we do have an NCELI, a North Carolina Early Learning Inventory, that is required by the state to be administered annually to kindergarten students. Kindergarten teachers started administering that survey in September, and that administration goes all the way through January. And the reason is, is because it's an observa, observation-based formative assessment, and it's, it does measure those set of five developmental progressions to be able to then figure out what teachers need to be able to do to support students across those five progressions. It's a process, not an instrument. And so, what will happen is, is a teacher might have a teacher's notes, like right here, kind of like I do, and the teacher will be watching the class or working with a small group, and that teacher might say, oh, I see Beth holding the book the right way, like right side up. Check. And then, over the course of the next six months, the teacher will continue to look for those types of behaviors, note those behaviors, and then ultimately, those get entered on a progression into a state database. DPI, Department of Public Instruction, doesn't provide that information at the district level or even at the school level, because it's only intended to be used by the teacher to be able to figure out what to do to support that student. So, we don't get that data from, from the state, either in the aggregate or by special population, or even by students who attended pre-K. We do have DIBELS, that's also state-required, so that's the data we're using. And new this year, we have a universal screener that's in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. It's certainly used by other districts and used within the state and nationally. It's called iReady. It is not required, we are required to have a universal screener, but we're not required to use iReady specifically. So, in future years, once we finished, this year was implementation year one, but as we have more of that data, that'll give us a little more insight across reading and math at where kindergarteners are entering kindergarten. But DIBELS is, is what we're using right now. In terms of enrollment, we are, we have increased in enrollment, while not yet pre-pandemic, we have increased in enrollment year over year for the last six years. We are consistently looking at ways that we can make sure that we are marketing our school district and that we are encouraging folks to, to be in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. There's been a lot of work that's happened, and Dr. Bautnay, I'll toss it to you, in terms of like forecasting, and interestingly enough, at the State Board of Education meeting, they just also did a forecast across, for the next five years across the state as well. But that's work that we continue to do. One thing that is interesting, and it's actually one of our community members who's been running some of this data for us as well, is that when you look across levels, the increases or decreases enrollment are not the same. And the high school in particular has had a significant increase in enrollment over past years, which is really interesting, and we're kind of watching, like when people enroll in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools and for what purpose, to then be able to figure out what is it that we need to make sure people are aware of is available in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools and that they could take advantage of, AKA what they're missing out on by not being here. Dr. Bautnay, do you want to speak to any additional efforts around enrollment?
I will just highlight that we did partner with a third party last year to do a ten-year demographic forecast to look at the trends, as you referred to, in the county, to make sure that as we're marketing and promoting, we're going after the right families to make sure that we reengage them back in the Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. I did not say my name, Melissa Bautnay, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you. Is there another response?
There were two more, we got them.
For your question about the admin cost, I would need to gather that information, what your information source was, so that then I could validate it and then dig into, see what the discrepancy is, because I'm not aware of the increase that you described, but we can get that information and dig into it for you.
And, goal two, grades three, eight, reading. In the 2223 school year, our baseline year for these goals, we were at thirty-one percent, thirty-point-five percent, but we round up to thirty-one percent. And that's college and career readiness, that would be students who are achieving a level four or a five. And while there's not a direct percentage from the state that we, that says a student's going to be level four or five, it's based off of student scale scores, we do kind of estimate towards thinking that that's a student who's getting about seventy, eighty percent of the questions on an end-of-grade test, correct? The way I think about it is, is that if a student's expected to read six reading passages in a, on a three-hour assessment, if they were unable to read one, or they didn't finish one of those passages, they probably will not be a level four or five on the test. We hold a high bar for what we want students to be able to do, but that doesn't reflect grade-level proficiency, which would be a level three, four, or five. So, we were at thirty-one percent in 2223, baseline college and career readiness, and then our target increases by four percentage points annually. Nationally, that would be a, almost on the high end of where we'd want to be, culminating in fifty percent of students being college and career-ready by 2829. Obviously, the percentage of students that would be grade-level proficient, three, four, or five, would exceed that. Our historical trend data says that that would probably be more like sixty or seventy percent grade-level proficient, but we are on, we are basing those targets off of a pretty aggressive, considering the rates of increase for reading nationally, a pretty aggressive year-over-year increase.
All right, that was, you hit everything. Commissioner, we'll come back to you, I know I have to come back to you, of course. I do want to acknowledge the presence of Commissioner Powell, do you want to bring greetings?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
I want to say thank you, Dr. Hill, so much for, you know, this is a really detailed presentation, and I'm very appreciative. I'm still in awe, like I said, I spent two years within CMS, and I won't take up my time about that, but still in awe of all the teachers. This is, I've got some, some questions that may be able to be answered here. A lot of my questions are parking lot questions, that's for another time. Because of the current environment that we're in, mostly, my questions are about funding. It was reported that there was like, there were three federal grants that were terminated. You talked about one already, the TLP one. The one with UNC Charlotte that was for one-point-eight million, that was to go to help with teacher recruitment and hard-to-staff schools. Is there a list of hard-to-staff schools? Is that money, has that funding been supplanted? And I'm just going to jumble all my questions together here. How much of the county's budget and/or your ask in addition is to supplant, or rather to supplement, what it is that you're not getting from the state or that was cut by the feds? That's one question. Additionally, because it is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it seems that there are some mental health things that are built into the everyday learning, but as a wraparound service, I think that we keep treating the symptoms, you know, violence in schools and things of this nature, instead of getting to the root of the problem. And if we had more services in-house, I really do believe, you know, as a start, I really do believe that that would contribute to them achieving academically. So, are there, is there a line item, or is there something that is more holistically designed to go towards mental health for our kids and protecting their mental health? And in addition to the budget questions, that's all I have. I just want to know what, what keeps you up? What worries you? What line item, if it were not funded, this is critical, this is not one that we can take a scalpel to and, and, you know, cut up.
Again, Melissa Bautnay, Deputy Superintendent. We do have counselors in all of our schools and psychologists that support our schools. In addition to that, we have an integrated approach to counseling services, so all of those folks, including social workers, work with our schools to support our students. We partner with local community agencies to also provide mental health services for our students. We continue to bring on new partners every year to make sure that we have a school-based therapist for every student that needs access to one, and then we have some funding that we use to support those families that may be between insurance providers.
What impact is that having? If we're continuing to have, you know, talking about violence in our schools and especially our more hard-to-staff schools, and I imagine that's because of the behavior of some of our students and the safety of our students, and I keep hearing about that and the fights that have been in the news, what are we doing directly? What evidence, what data do we have that what we're actually doing, we're not just throwing money after something or checking a box?
Great question. We're being very intentional. One of the things that we continue to do is make sure that we raise awareness with our families. We're bringing more families in and having those conversations to make them aware of the services. These services also can expand into in-home therapeutic services for the family as well, because sometimes that is the need. So, we're continuing to grow the program and make them aware, because that's one of the things that we felt that families weren't as aware of the services. I just was in a meeting a month ago, and people weren't aware that we even offered school-based therapy. So, we continue to communicate and educate with families as things come up, and we certainly want to continue to grow that.
I wanted to see if we were tracking that and if we can...
Yes, I don't have that data with me, but we can certainly get that back.
Thank you.
I can answer one question.
Sure, thank you.
Regarding what...
Can you pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, please?
Regarding the question about what we're supplanting in the local budget, so we currently did not build any of the cuts from the federal dollars into this budget request. The budget request seemingly reflects the compensation and our priority to competitive market. We have not done that because we do not have a final answer on, even the federal funds are frozen, they're being appealed, so we don't know that we're definitely going to lose those. With the Title II and Title III, that's part of the president's current budget, but as we know, that has to go through a couple of more stages before that's final. So, we have not, we've not given up hope at this point, so we've not built in anything into the local budget ask.
Thank you.
And then, I think you asked about the UNC Charlotte teacher recruitment grant, how are prioritized schools determined?
That's significant, yeah, one-point-eight million.
Sure, Nancy Brightwell, Chief of Recruitment, Retention, Talent Development, and this was a grant, the Teacher Quality Program Grant. The design of that was to fund supplemental support for teachers who agreed to come in to become teachers. So, there were three cohorts, it's a total of thirty-six teachers that were funded through that grant that was terminated, and it was intended to offer tuition-free and supplements as they were working their way toward licensure, and with the agreement that upon graduation, they agreed to work in our hard-to-staff schools, which we do have some priority schools that are identified. The first of those three cohorts made it through before the grant was terminated, and all twelve of those cohort members are currently working in our hard-to-staff schools in critical vacancy areas. The other two were not through that, and so that funding was lost.
Is there a list of hard-to-staff schools?
Yes, yes.
All right. Next up will be Commissioner Leake, then Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, and Vice Chair Altman.
Thank you. Let me first say thank you for being here this morning. Well, this afternoon, it feels like morning. We had a board meeting yesterday. My concern as a retired teacher, to hear you talk about salaries and supplement for teachers. Teachers make the wheel turn. How many national-certified teachers are actually teaching and not being led to work as administrators? I want to know that. Number two, I'm worried about K-8. On the west side of town, schools are not equipped, teachers are not equipped, competition, the coursework is not the same as it is in the schools that's not K-8. So that worries me, because that involves a lot of young, black male boys who are not being challenged within the confines of the school system. Not just with academics, but competing with sports and the older kids in the school. So it's not a good thing. And as a retired teacher and as a community activist, I hope you will do something about that. I've been talking about it. Why are we still paying the national-certified program $10,000 a year for our teachers to participate in that program? And how many do we have listed, as I said before? My next question is housing. I was in Mobile, Alabama, four weeks ago. While there, met with a contractor, and I had that individual who works with the city of Mobile, who works with housing, to call our chairperson of the school board and communicate. And he has been trying to get here to get with her when she's available, to see how we can make sure that we help those parents and those teachers to be actively involved, helping themselves to begin home safe, and especially for their children. My next concern is about the enrollment. We built a new West Charlotte Senior High School, and I want to thank Deena for helping me to fight hard to get bronze and to get a new West Charlotte. And at the very first meeting, a board member makes a motion to drennel that school down. So I want to know what is the attendance at West Charlotte, and if it's overcrowded or not. And the third, fourth thing I'm concerned about is the School of Performing Arts. School of Performing Arts. All we're doing, and I'm not saying you are responsible, but at this point you are responsible, that facility is a patch job. It's a room here and a room there. So how do we work hard to get a facility that's accommodating to the children, that's interested in becoming great performers in our country? I believe that helps me, oh, middle school, I did that. Do I have to stop now, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead and finish your question.
Okay, my last one deals with 12.5% of the national-certified teachers make that kind of money, and we're still talking about supplement. And I'm not against supplement, I'm not against paying teachers. My last question is, how much are we paying our administrative staff? If I'm out of order, let me know, and I can live with that. What are their salaries compared to the salaries of my classroom teachers? Help us to see where our funds are really being spent also. So that's a concern. Not jealous, because you might be making more money, but we need to know where the money is, that's where the work is, that's where your best staff is.
You can start with that.
Thank you for allowing me that time. He just cut me off, I'm giving him, he cut his throat.
I think I cut you off, too. I'm sorry about that.
She cut you off, I didn't cut you off.
Thank you, though, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll start with nationally-board certified teachers, if that's okay. I have some statistics, and then Nancy, if you want to add in, if that would be okay. So of our 1,450 active nationally-board certified teachers in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools currently, 1,000...
How many did you say, 50?
1,450.
And what schools are they?
I do not have the full list of schools, but I do have the total numbers. 1,087 are currently in teaching roles, counselor roles, or media coordinator roles, so working directly.
Teaching, that's what it says, it doesn't say counseling.
Yes. There is part of nationally-board certification, though, that can support others, but yes. And that responds to like, how many are in teaching roles? Nancy, is there anything else you want to add regarding the impact of nationally-board certified teachers in the schools they serve?
Sure. Again, Nancy Brightwell, Chief of Recruitment, Retention, and Talent Development. What I would say is that the state recognizes, in terms of the state recognition of tied to classroom, the three categories are teacher, counselor, and media coordinator. The remaining 363 achieved national board certification and have moved into administrative positions. I would also say that the national board program, and that is one of the largest in the country, is one of our best retention strategies. Teachers who receive state, the state level of 12% increase on their salary, again, that's state-funded, are 20% more likely to stay in CMS and in our schools, supporting our schools, and we know how highly effective they are.
I'm not against them getting that money, just need to know where they are.
Regarding K-8 schools, Dr. Bautnait, would you be willing?
Yes. This year, this current school year, Melissa Bautnait, Deputy Superintendent, we have created a new service delivery model. And so in the past, you've heard of learning community superintendents. This year, we have our assistant superintendents level, they're bi-level. So we actually have one assistant superintendent that oversees all of the K-8 schools, because it is very different, as you've shared. And we've been very intentional with the work. And oftentimes, in a K-8 school, there may be one or two classes per grade level, so we've been able to put some strategies in place that they can meet with teachers at other K-8 schools and play in together to build the teacher capacity and strengthen the instruction in the classroom and support the students. In addition, because we have one person focused on K-8, we're also better able to support their intramurals and athletics, because it is a very different model. So we have been very intentionally focused on our K-8 schools this year in a new and different way.
Enrollment at West Charlotte and it runs, I don't have that with me at the moment. We can get that for you.
Thank you.
And then I think the Northwest School of the Arts...
Of the Performing Arts, yes.
Yes. Yes. Chief Ivy, would you be willing to speak to improvements that are happening there?
Absolutely. Tim Ivy, Chief Operations Officer. So we are currently in the final phase of the work of the Northwest School of the Arts, which includes a new building, it's a 912 conversion expansion. And you can go on our cmsbonconstruction.com website. It has all the outlines of the construction, videos of the new building going up, and the updates of everything that's happening at the school.
That was the last one?
My last one?
That was the last question.
Was that the last one?
Yes, that was it.
I meant to talk about parents, because they seem to be left out of this process. I'll come back to that, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just first want to say thank you for all of this. I really don't envy you guys. I think you're sort of asked to be magicians, and, I don't know, that's just crazy to me, the funding model, and I don't know how you guys can do this, it's crazy. So, so thank you for that. And I also want to just join, you know, many of my school board colleagues, you know, and some around this dais, who believe that teachers are the key to all of this and to children learning at the highest levels. It's about the teachers. So I noticed that in your presentation, you talked about 99% of the positions were filled in 2425, and that's just a different narrative than what I'm used to hearing. And so I'm just wondering, like, did you lower the number of positions to get it to be 99%? Or did you, you know, did you fill with non-teachers? Like, what's the story there? Or maybe I should just ask my other questions, so I don't run out of time. Also, page 28, I really wanted to understand about the multilingual learners. It states that there's 208 positions. How many kids are served in this? I know that you mentioned how many, 145 different languages or something. You know, how many kids does that represent for that? And then I also wanted to just touch on the graph of the teachers' supplements. And you've got, you know, Chapel Hill as sort of, you know, the standard bearer or the goal, maybe it's the goal. And I just kind of wanted to understand a little bit more about the expectations there. So that's a few things to throw out.
Sounds great. We'll start with the 99% teacher fill rate. I'll turn to Chief Brightwell for information about how that's been tracked this year and how we've gotten there.
Sure, thank you for the question. I would say that a key to our strategy has, well, several key components of our strategy have been, one, tracking it every single week. The modifying our marketing and recruitment strategy to divest from things, traveling and spending, quite frankly, large amounts of money oftentimes to places where we're not getting, we're not getting strong candidates. So we've really modified and modernized our recruitment strategies. In addition to that, we're fortunate to have, again, one of the most successful education preparation programs here in Charlotte Mecklenburg. That's the CMS Teacher Residency Program. We're continuing to recruit second, oftentimes second-career people, or people who are in other non-certified positions within Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, to move into that residency program to become teachers. So last year, I believe we had 180 coming out of that CMS Teacher Residency Program, going directly into our classrooms. This year, we're on track to put over 300. So that, some of those strategies have dramatically improved our ability to have teachers.
So where are those folks? They're in the system, but they're not teachers currently?
They are currently, once they come into the residency program, they'll have three years during which we're helping them to satisfy all of the course requirements, they have a clinical educator, and to satisfy the required state tests to become fully licensed. But they come through that program, if they're, again, are coming from second, other careers.
Second career, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
The other thing I'll just add as well, and just accentuate is, you know, it's interesting to watch trends in terms of people who are applying, and then both the number of people applying to roles and the quantity of, the quality of people applying to roles. But one really positive indicator was the statistic that we shared, around over 1,300 teachers attended our most recent career fair, it was about a month, month and a half ago. We haven't seen, we haven't seen numbers like that in a long time, right, Chief Brightwell? And, and that is really, really encouraging for both the work that's happening in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, the momentum around results that's happening in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, and then the commitment to increasing, to continue to discuss what salary looks like, both in terms of monetary salary, but then also the other benefits of work and supports that you can have working in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. So it's not to say, hey, we're stopping, but it is good momentum in the right direction, and I think a sign that we're working on the right things. We're not there yet, transition to Chapel Hill, but we're working on the right things.
Nancy, can you talk a little bit about the total compensation model that you've just released? I know that came up in conversation last year. Former Commissioner Cotham brought that up, and I'd just like for you to share a little bit about that.
What's that, did he, Madam Chairman? What did you just say?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I was talking about, in relationship to the question that was asked about compensation, during our budget presentation last year, former Commissioner Cotham talked a little bit about outside of salary, what are you, what strategies are you imploring to make sure that folks that are coming to you understand the total compensation package, excuse me, total compensation other than just salary? And so we've made some great strides in that area, so I was just asking if Chief Brightwell would speak a little bit to that.
Thank you. Sure. Our division created an actual total compensation simulator, and that was really an impressive feature, actually, at this year's career fair. So an employee could go to a workstation, put in what their current qualifications are, what level of degree they have, and it calculates what their actual total compensation is. So we're not just looking at base date salary anymore, we're really helping employees to hopefully be lured to coming to us by looking at all the other things that add on to what that total compensation is. So it was exciting to see in action and the responses of people looking to come into our district to see the impact of that.
And then in, go ahead, no, you do Chapel Hill.
So the goal here, so we've identified the top three paying districts, Sean, in the state, and so you can see, one, I think it's important to point out, again, that Chapel Hill has a revenue source that most districts do not, so they have a taxing authority that is helping them support this supplement, and you can see that it's high. In response to other districts increasing their supplement last year, Chapel Hill targeted the years, and you can see on this slide, the years 25 to 30. As I mentioned, the state base pay levels out starting at year 15, does not change until year 25, and it has a small increase at year 25. So essentially, teachers are looking at flat pay after year 15. So what Chapel Hill has done is in an effort to increase that, make up for the state's deficiencies in those last 15 to 30 years. When we received feedback from our engagement sessions, from our teachers, from our board, from our community, we were asked to do the same thing. One of the, one of the targets, one of the goals of the supplement was to increase at that higher level, so the years 15, 20, and 25, 15 to 30. And so that is our goal, is one of our goals, is to be more competitive. You can see that when we look at total compensation, you can see that part of that is that Chapel Hill does a better job at retaining. So when they retain, their base salary is higher, and then you supplement it, so we certainly won't, we have to recruit, so our base salary for, our beginning supplement for a beginning teacher is high, higher than Chapel Hill, and we have to be able to keep them and retain them for stability. And so that's what our focus is with the supplement as well, years 15 and above.
Thank you, that's helpful.
And then multilingual learn, oh, sorry, go ahead, no, no, go ahead.
I said I wasn't going to talk much today, but I do want to make sure that we just settle in here for just a little bit. When we start talking about teacher salary, I think it's really, really important, it was provided in the presentation, but I just want to make sure that we go back and revisit and have full understanding of how teachers are paid in North Carolina. So every teacher in North Carolina receives a based salary that is set by the state of North Carolina. Then in addition to that, some districts, most districts, also include a local supplement, that that's provided, obviously, by local county commissioners. You all have been extremely gracious in communicating year-over-year that that is a priority of this board as it is of ours. The other thing is that there are districts that all, all districts, except for four of us this current year, receive a state supplement. of us this current year, receive a state supplement. So one thing that I heard a gasp in the room, but I just want to make sure that we revisit it, right now, current drafted legislation, now, the numbers show that based on tax base, there would be, how many additional added to that list?
Four additional.
So there would be a total of eight that would be excluded. So I just want all residents of Mecklenburg County to perk up your ears to this point. We get involved in all this noise and don't listen to the facts. Right now, there are four counties that are eliminated out of 115, four.
That's right.
Based on tax base, based on local taxes, there will be eight. There is drafted legislation right now to go from what should be eight, based on the current formula, to two. Are we hearing what is happening?
A question, what are we doing about it?
The formula says there should be eight. My guess would be that residents of those new four are saying, wait a minute. Our teachers, beginning July 1, are going to take a pay cut. Why? Because the state's no longer going to supplement them. That's going to be pulled from under them, and the only way they will have to manipulate a teacher's pay is by what folks in your seats do locally. And the local government is saying, we do not have the capability to raise, to cover that gap and to continue to supplement, which already be there, right? So people wake up and say, that can't happen, so let's go back and change it. And now we're going to exclude two. So you asked me the question of what keeps me up at night. What keeps me up at night is we get distracted by all of these other things and stop paying attention to what is really important. If we are serious in Mecklenburg County and we say, because we all say it, that we value teachers, we will do something about it, start having, stop having this conversation about what are y'all going to do, because what y'all do impacts me. I'm a taxpayer, right? So if you all say we're going to make changes for taxes, for supplement, I'm all in, but it impacts all of us. And start thinking about what we are already doing as residents of North Carolina, and that is paying state taxes that should be paying the base salary for every single teacher in North Carolina, including those, the $9,000 that work right here in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. That is what keeps me up at night. So to go back to your question, I think it's really important, if, if the county wants to increase further than what we've already laid out, you will not hear anybody say that would be a terrible idea. Our request is in response to what we listened to keenly when we came to the joint meeting, when we heard both boards go back and forth in dial, in dialogue about what your current situations were, the priorities of this board, your current financial outlook, and the things that needed to happen. So we went back, we put our heads together, we worked really hard. I am El Chepo. I do not like to spend money. So what we said is, we're going to go back, and we're going to dig deep, and we're going to figure out a way to do all of these things. We're going to tighten our belts, and we're only going to ask the county for what we need. Not saying that teachers don't deserve more, because they do, but we were also cognizant that we did not want to ask for anything more than this board and your staff indicated that you had the ability to do. So when we have a conversation, I would encourage us to take really bold steps, steps like Carrotuck County, that the boards of, the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners came together and said, we're going to write a resolution, and we're going to talk to Raleigh and say, Raleigh, we need you to do what you are required to do, i.e. Leandro, and that is to provide a sound and basic education for every single student in North Carolina, including all students that live right here in Mecklenburg County.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Feist, your all.
Thank you.
I don't think they finished their answers.
We had one more around multilingual learners. I feel like that was a mic drop moment, though. It's hard to come in on the back end.
I have a million follow-up questions, but I can't ask them.
No, but we, we've got it, yes. Dr. Bocknight, do you want me to do stats for multilingual? Would you like to?
I'm listening to what?
We have, depending on the day, 30, most recent, 32,891 multilingual learners in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. That's 23.1% of our overall student population. That is the highest in the state of North Carolina by a landslide. And interestingly enough, we're making the largest English learner-student progress. In other words, one of our metrics is how much our English language learners or multilingual learners are growing in their understanding of English. Our rate of progress is the highest in the state. The other thing Dr. Hill will often say is, 32,000-plus students, in many cases, is as large or larger than the majority of school districts in North Carolina. Let me say it again. 32,000-plus multilingual learners is larger than many entire school districts in North Carolina.
Thank you.
Was that the, was that all the questions?
That was all, yes.
Thank you. Feist, your all.
Thank you all for being here, our critical CMS partners. I want to begin by commending you on the meaningful strides in the right direction, which you've reported out today, truly and sincerely. We see you and we appreciate everything that you've been doing under the leadership of Dr. Hill. I think it's pretty amazing that you run a transit system that's three times the size of cats, if my numbers are correct. Like, that's, that's just something that's a really big deal. And in addition to everything else you're trying to do, I think it's amazing, 99% of teacher position fills attrition rate dropped by 4%, and 45,000 Charlotte Mecklenburg residents stepping forward to be volunteers in our public school system. I just think that's a beautiful story of the community coming together. And I just wanted to begin by, by thanking you and all the residents and this board. We are very strong partners for you. We have increased CMS's operating budget by $140 million just since I've joined the board. And that shows a consistent commitment of all, everybody here who so deeply values public education. I had two questions. The first is, I believe that when I came on the board, enrollment was around 147,000, and it sounds like we're still around 141,000. So it sounds like there's still a slow recovery for average daily membership. And I want to ask what you think about that relative to the $2 billion bond for school construction, only because we want to try to, you know, use our resources carefully as we go forward. And how do you see the recovery of that average daily membership? The other thing I wanted to ask about is technology. You know, when I was growing up, obviously, I had no technology, none of us did, except I had a typewriter in eighth grade, where I went to a classroom to use that bit of technology. The rapid shift towards more technology, I'm not clear how much it is benefiting learning. I, you know, interested in a discussion about whether there's proof these devices are improving educational outcomes, because, you know, I thought I, I saw like a metric of $15 million a year, which I would love to go to teacher payer counselors, especially when there is a problem with AI, children using, everybody using AI, unfortunately, instead of doing independent thinking. You know, is it, is it a good idea to go back to Blue Books and writing in class and removing technology, except where you go to a class to learn the, the skill, computer skills, and, you know, how to, you know, navigate the technology? But to not issue it to fourth graders and fifth graders and sixth graders, also because I have no scientific proof, but worry that it is what is behind the mental health crisis, the disconnection that, that our children are experiencing and, and so many behavioral issues. So I'm just really interested in your own reflections on those two questions. Thank you.
Sure. Dr. Bocknight, would you be willing to speak to enrollment and school placement programs, possibly Chief Ivey, around how it works with enrollment and then also enacting bond dollars?
One of the things, and I will defer to Mr. Ivey, our bond projects, a lot, the majority of them are replacements. And as I do the enrollment and capacity pieces, there's a need to have these replacement schools to make sure that we have space to do all the other interactive and innovative things that we need to have in schools in 2025. So there is still value, even though our enrollment has not made the recovery that we would like. There's a need to have these replacement schools that have larger spaces than they have today, from the instructional standpoint. And then I'll defer to Chief Ivey to share any additional things about the bond projects.
Thank you. I think it's also very important to understand that part of the bond, as Dr. Bocknight mentioned, is about replacement, and it helps us deal with the aging facilities that we have in our schools in Mecklenburg County, which is why we're conducting facilities condition assessments to be able to long-range capital plan. So we can not only look at the age and life cycle of the buildings, but are we actually, as taxpayers, utilizing these buildings to the best of our ability? And with that, in conjunction with the outlay of where families are going to be and what our forecasting document says, placing the schools in the appropriate places so that we're providing the most appropriate educational environment for students.
And there's data we can be happy to share, also, as I'm sure, on our website, on, under Board Docs, around forecasting efforts, both at the local level within Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. But then again, the state just produced a report that also does that statewide. If I remember correctly, regarding local level forecasting, one thing that they note is that all, just because population in Charlotte Mecklenburg is increasing, doesn't mean school, the number of school-aged children is increasing. And so when they looked across the next 10 years, they actually were projecting continued growth of school-aged children, but moderate for the next few years. But then I believe it was in five to 10 years, they projected that, projected that that would accelerate. And so it, it's fascinating to look at growth trends, who's moving in, who's not, and that type of thing. At the state level, again, we can get this for you, but Charlotte Mecklenburg was at the top in terms of total number, the highest number of projected student enrollment across the next five years. The percentage was not as high as some other districts, but it also was way higher than the majority of districts, I would say. But the state, it's, it's helpful when the state and our local projections are lining up pretty significantly. And I think our job is to continue to make sure Charlotte Mecklenburg schools is a place people want to come. And one of the things we've grappled with a lot is how we tell our story around the successes, opportunities like today, where we can talk about $46.2 million worth of scholarships, and we're not even finished the school year yet. These are opportunities and platforms that help give us, give us a way to be able to talk about the successes of our school district and the opportunities that exist in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, that, not to throw shade, but don't always exist in other school options. And things like we talked about today, credentials that existed at our, at our high school level. It is a significant opportunity for students to be able to graduate with full-blown industry credentials, that if I were to try to go out and get right now, I'd be paying $2,000 or $3,000 per credential for. That doesn't exist in all of the other school options in Mecklenburg County. And so it is, it's, it is significant regarding, regarding enrollment. Related to technology, I think there are a couple things that come to mind that I think would be good to note. One of the things that I think is interesting about, and I think what has propelled and augmented technology use, is that all of our state testing is online now. And I say that not to say that's the, the driving force behind all things that are optional, an option with technology, but what is not an option is to not have technology for students to be able to take the assessments, AKA, we've got to have the devices, because that's the way they take their assessments now, from grades three up. And the other thing is, is that it is here, and AI specifically is here. We had an exceptional data privacy summit. It's our second annual, a huge thank you to Dr. Candace Salmon-Hosey. And today's was focused around AI, both the engagement that's gone on within the community over the last year to find out what people are thinking about AI. What we came out with is that people are holding two things as true. They're really, really curious about what it's going to look like, and they're really concerned, right, at the same time? And so some of the, but it's, but it's here. And there are also plenty of opportunities for its use. Our summit opened today with one of our students. And what she said is, I'm getting ready to graduate. I want to, I have this career aspiration. I need to have the technological skills, including how to use AI, because when I walk into that job in four years after college, it's going to be an expectation that I know how to use it. And she said to us, and I don't know right now. And we had to sit with that for a little minute, right? So there's this, like, what is the path forward? It's here. Careers are already using it, and they took us through lots and lots of examples where in medicine already, they're using it and having higher rates of accuracy in diagnoses than, than human rates of diagnosis. But it is how we begin to look at, we're taking a really cautious approach in how we, in how we employ the use of technology to be able to move forward.
Well, thank you for that. I guess what I would say very quickly is, I understand you have to have Chromebooks in the school to engage in testing, but that's a far different expenditure than sending one home with every fourth grader to high school or where they are, you know, get broken, get lost. And it doesn't really address the impact on whether it's actually helpful for learning outcomes or impeding learning and social emotional growth. And I do hope that there's a conversation about that. I'm not the right person, y'all are, I defer to you, but I hope that it's being truly interrogated, because we all sort of swooped into the technology life without all the knowledge and understanding the implications, and maybe it is a time for us to reassess, especially considering it's tens and tens of millions of dollars that could be so well-used elsewhere in the system. Thank you.
Could we speak to it? I think Dr. Bocknight would like to, yes.
Yes, as the instruction person, I just want to make sure that we're clear that that's not our only purpose and function for devices, for testing. It allows us, for example, to have students have access to 8,000 books that they're interested in, because we can purchase a subscription at a low cost. And so now, as a student, I can go on at home or at school and digitally find books that I'm interested in. In addition, we're able to utilize and create efficiencies with our resources, because we don't have to purchase all those hardback books. Students aren't carrying, as we've seen before, 10 books home, and then they're, have issues with their book bag and their back. And it also provides a core experience for every student across the district. We also, for example, I just dealt with a family that the child is out unfortunately ill, and we were able to upload all of their assignments into the platform, so the student could continue to remain active and engaged in school. While at home, whereas before, we'd have a packet in the front office with a bunch of paper copies and hope the parent was able to come up there and pick them up while the child was absent. So it just creates efficiencies, and we're able to stay connected and engaged. But we do have times and spaces in our daily schedule. The kids are device-free, and they're working independently in small group with, independently or in small groups with teachers. So we certainly don't have a full day for an elementary student that they're on, they have screen time, and they're on a device.
All right. We'll move to Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So I love being in the room with people who never give up on problem solving. And these, there's a lot of problems. I really want to focus on special education, exceptional children, special needs. So I have a friend who called recently and said her daughter just graduated with a degree in education, a really good degree. And I said, oh, send her to Mecklenburg County. And she said she won't, she won't be a teacher. She's not going to be a teacher, because whatever happened in her student teaching was so traumatic that she's not going to do it. And so sometimes money isn't the incentive. It's the work environment. It's all of the things that are happening, managing the disruptions and hoping that you have support in dealing with that. So I would like to know, as the voucher system expands, I keep reading, and it's intuitive, you know, that the population that remains in public schools will have increased needs. How is this, you know, like, how are special needs addressed in the budget ask? Is there, I feel like there is, is there a gap for the need, in the need for you, are there openings? there a gap for the need, in the need for you? Are there openings for special ed, exceptional children, special needs teachers? I'd like to know what that, what that gap is. And, you know, we talk about literacy, which is so important. Like, I was just writing my Mother's Day card to my mom last night, and I said, "Thank you for being so serious about making sure your children were well-educated." The need for early intervention for special needs children is as important as literacy, to me. And so I really would like to get some feedback on what, how did you address this in the budget, and is there still a gap? Thank you.
I can take that one, the budget aspect of it. So we have EC funds that come from multiple funding sources. So there's a primary funding source from the state that supports EC students. And so the formula has recently changed with the EC formula. And so for districts that are urban like us and are large, often that formula provides us additional revenue sources as opposed to the previous formula. So I've looked at planning allotments, and we actually have received a, a small additional amount of money based on the formula. So that was a pro for us. But of course, that's not nearly enough. We have federal funding, the IDEA funds that come down for, to supplement federal funds. So we have that. We also have Medicaid funding. And then we also have, like, special state reserves, so small little pockets of money for specific things. However, the gap does exist, and it's been there forever. So what we have to do is, we have to divert funds. So the allotment that I have for regular teachers, ADM, we call it, for just the normal, based on ADM, average daily membership, we have to then supplement out of that pot for our EC teachers, because there's just not sufficient funding. We have funding for teacher assistance. Our pots of money are very specific. So the state says, "You can spend this money on EC children. You can spend this money on teacher assistance." So we have to spend some of our teacher assistant money on EC teacher assistance, because there's not enough dollars in the EC allotments. So we are supplementing. Certainly, there are local dollars that support EC children as well.
That's out.
Can I, can I finish? I just had a quick question.
Sure.
I love what Dr. Hill said, and I think we all believe it and know it, and it's like shouting into a hurricane when you're talking to the General Assembly. And, and so we've been doing things the same way for so long, and it's not working. So how, you know, like, I would just like for the problem solvers and creative thinkers to think about how we can do creative messaging to the General Assembly, because it's made up of so many, 96 rural, about 96 rural counties that might not have an understanding. When they look at our tax base, they think, "Oh, yeah, Mecklenburg can do it." So, you know, maybe we need to do a video for the whole General Assembly. But I just would, I think we, you know, something to think about, creative messaging, because what we're doing isn't working. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know Commissioner Griffin wanted a couple of follow-ups. I just want to poll the board members. Did anyone else have burning follow-ups? So little follow-ups, no? Okay, so tiny one. All right. So what we'll do is, we'll give a couple of minutes for some follow-ups, and then I'll go into my, yes, too. And it'll be a hard stop, Madam Clerk, so thank you. Commissioner Griffin, we'll start with you, then we'll go to my right to Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell and Commissioner Meyer. And you want to go?
I'll be brief. But thank you for your presentation. I know sometimes I can ask crazy questions, but most folk can hear that are parents. I'm a parent, and when I sent my two children to CMS, as five-year-olds, the first few weeks of school, the teacher responded in terms of whether they were ready for kindergarten. And Beth, I love you. You top educator. And your response about a book, in the front of the book, back of the book, et cetera. But just, this is sometimes where education, leadership, and common sense goes to die. As a parent, you send your five-year-old to school, and the first three weeks, four weeks, wouldn't you want to know if they knew what one, and two, and three, and four, and five, and six, and how the numbers relate to maybe the days of the week, et cetera? There is a bucket of information that parents ought to know, educators ought to know, if you're ready for kindergarten. And we spend hundreds of millions of dollars, at least millions of dollars, on that Krikay, and we can't say if our babies are ready for kindergarten, just simply as, do they recognize their numbers from one to 10 in the first 30 days? And the other piece is, and I'm certain to want to work with you, is if you graduate enrolled, employed, and enlisted, Beth, you said, "We don't know." We have these elements, and if they meet these elements for goal four, that's it. There used to be, with the National Center for Educational Statistics, a way of dealing with enrollment, at least. So I don't know about employment and enlisted, but we, we got to do a better job. And I'd love to try to help you think through, be doing a better job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Any response?
I can, yes.
Sure.
So, so to be clear, in the area of reading, 43% of our kindergarteners came into school in September of this past year. 43% were at or above benchmark to start the year. So we do know where our kindergarteners are related to reading to start the year. And we're implementing a universal screener for math, so that we'll be able to know that as well. And then once we know that information around reading and math, then teachers are continuing to teach grade-level content in, in kindergarten, and then also supporting students with what additionally they need. I think we're continuing to look at the implications, and I hope our community will too, around that 43% entering kindergarten at or above benchmark, because our goal one targets are built off of a theory that we're going to close the gap in reading upon entry to kindergarten as quickly as we possibly can. Because the longer it takes us to close that gap, the less time we have students spending on grade-level content. And that then turns into needing to fill gaps as we head into goal two, reading grades three through eight. And then related to goal four, I think it's what, it's the What Works Clearing House. Leading on Opportunity is also in their Opportunity Compass is, is reporting on that as well. It is one of the conversations that we're having with the Data Trust with UNC Charlotte, which is really organized to say, "Hey, what are community issues?" They've been really focused on Charlotte Mecklenburg, but are interested in making it more of a regional initiative. And one of the things that we're in conversation around is, what would it look like as a community to be able to track better what happens with students after they've graduated from high school? And I think that'll be a really interesting conversation to be having as a community, to be able to know where student, what the, what the success rate is of our hypothesis in goal four, that if they've met one of these indicators, there's a greater likelihood. So more to come, more to come there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to go back to the mic drop moment from Dr. Hill. The, the supplements that you were mentioning that are determined by the state, how long has Mecklenburg been left out of that? Has it always been that way, or when did that occur?
Always.
It's always been that way?
Always been that way.
And has there always been a supplement to the other counties but not?
No.
Okay, so that's a new thing?
It's a newer trend. I'm going to, I'm going to guess five years. I would, I would look that up for you, but I'm going to guess five years.
Okay. And so the, the portion about some, some teachers earn an additional local supplement is determined by districts that may have taxing authority. So how many districts have taxing authority, or are you saying, you know, cities, local municipalities, other than counties, are doing that?
So we know that Chapel Hill Carboro does, and we also know that Mooresville City does.
So there's two in the entire state?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. And those are the municipalities, not the school districts?
They are the municipalities and not the county school district, yes.
Okay. Okay. So they have the ability?
I'm sorry. So just to be clear, so I'll speak to Mooresville, because I used to work there. So Mooresville is in Iredell County. Iredell County provides a supplement for Mooresville City Schools and Iredell County Schools. They're two system district. But Mooresville graded school district has the opportunity to levy a tax. They have an additional school tax that they're then able to incorporate into their local budget. So they have taxing authority that comes through the town of Moores. So it is through the municipality as well.
So the municipality is the one who gets to?
That's my understanding.
It's not the General Assembly, who says they have the authority to do that?
I'm not the expert.
Gotcha.
I just know that we received additional money, and it was because we had the ability to levy a town tax, a city tax.
Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Griffin, go ahead and say that publicly, because this addresses your question.
There are combo districts, like Mooresville, Iredell, Kannaplis, Chapel Hill, Carboro. Those are city and county districts. And the cities, they started off as city districts, and so the city, it's leveled taxes, and that's just continued over time. Okay? When Charlotte Mecklenburg merged, they ended up with one tax base, as opposed to the city of Charlotte originally had a tax base, and the county had a tax base. But when they merged, we came up with one. Those two, those other communities kept their tax base. So there's a city tax base for the school and a county tax base for the schools.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. On slide 43, the schedule, the great, pay grades, I'm not sure I understand this. When I think of a school, I think of teamwork from the custodial staff all the way to the principal. Do custodians and bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, is that county? Is that state? Is that a combination in terms of who pays? And how do we compare to the rest of the state? And, okay, are these state positions, or are they county positions?
They are both. So we'll get an allotment from the state, a small allotment for custodians. We get a small allotment for clerical staff, but it's only about sufficient to pay for about 50% of the needs of our staff. So again, the state has underfunded, and local has to supplement that.
Okay. Are they the $20 an hour employees, or is that, that's the minimum?
That's the minimum in our district. No one in our district makes less than $20 an hour.
Okay. And what's, how do we compare with other districts?
So for a position like a custodian, we're going to appear to be way more competitive, because our cost of living is way more, is way higher. But when you compare the value of what an employee gets for $20 an hour and where they live, as opposed to the market value and where they live, so relative value, right, the value of what they're able to do with that, has to be looked at rather than just the $18 an hour versus $20 an hour. The state has a minimum, and we're higher than that. So we are often higher than most, most counties.
Okay. Do they also, and this goes to you, Nancy, do they also, are they offered an opportunity for housing advice that you, or is that just teachers, the housing program?
Yes, any educator.
Any educator, anybody in the school?
Anybody in the system, correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Leake.
As I listen to all of you talk about what we ought to do, what we need to do, and my thing is get up and let's do something. On February the 14th of this year coming up, I'm planning a trip to Raleigh to lobby with the state legislators and the governor for money for our teachers, so we can say we're going to do something about what's happening. That means we're going to close the schools, we want the teachers to go with us, and parents can come in and run the school that particular day as we do what we have to do. I did it in 69, I mean, 89, and we were able to get a pay raise. And I carried 46 buses out of Charlotte with teachers and community people. So if you say you want to do something, let's do it, and let's stop talking. Thank you. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Leake. Let me say thank you to our colleagues for being here, for the presentation, for the follow-up, the answers to the questions, and listening to the feedback. I want to thank my colleagues, certainly, for the substantive nature of the questions and for the spirit of the majority of the questions. I think that's really important. Where we are today, I think, when I look at this conversation that we're having today, it is abundantly clear, crystal clear, no pun intended, that the only way we achieve these goals is by working together. There's no way around it. There's no other way out. There's no back door. We are in this thing together. We are in the same boat. We have the same goals. It is clear, leadership matters. I want to commend the manager and the superintendent for coming together, working together, having tough conversations. But then, at the end of the day, understanding and doing what's best for the community. And to everyone in this room, everyone who's watching, that's what leadership is all about. That's what we all should be about. Your executive teams reflect that as well. They reflect the culture that you've set, and they reflect that level of leadership. And so I want to thank you. To the Chair and the Vice Chair, thank you for your leadership, for what you all are doing, how you're leading your board, and how you are working with us and listening to us. And so as we move forward, it's clear that we have a limited amount of friends outside of this bubble called Mecklenburg County. It's a, it's a limited number of friends. We could do videos, we can do notes, we can do resolutions.
But we can't get any money.
Well, where will they land? We don't, we don't know. And until the tides change, I think we're going to continue, we're going to have to continue to find creative ways to achieve the goals, to meet the needs of our families and our community. But I am thankful for where the boards are. I'm thankful for where the staffs are. And I want to thank you for the thoughtfulness that went into the budget. We certainly have work to do. But from when I first got on this board to where we are now, I've certainly seen progress, and I want to publicly acknowledge that. And I want to say thank you again for your time. I want to thank everybody, my colleagues in particular, for your time as well. And with that, I don't think we have any other business, so I will adjourn.
I move.
So move.
Seconded, properly seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.